Regular council meeting for Monday, January 11th, 2021 to order at this time. We will take a silent moment of personal reflection. As a reminder, all members of council are obligated to declare conflict of interest or pecuniary interest as per section 133 of the Lloydminster Charter regarding any item on this agenda. I will declare for 7.2.2 council remuneration. It's policy that'll be on, also I'll be stepping out. Anyone else should be noted? Not seeing any, thank you very much. I will call for any additions or deletions to this agenda. Not seeing any, nothing changed. No problem. Alright, how's that? You still getting me through there? Okay, perfect. Alright, then moving on to item number three, the approval of the agenda that's been submitted before us. I'll look for direction, councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that the agenda dated January 11th, 2021 be approved.
Thank you very much for that note. Councillor Fagin gets the second here. Any further discussion? I can see you councillor Torrison, anything to add before I call for the question? Nope, thank you very much. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Carried. Moving on to item number four, the approval of the previous meeting minutes. I'll look for direction from councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that the regular council minutes dated December 14th, 2020 be approved.
Thank you. Secondaire councillor Whiting, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Not seeing any noted? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Item number five, business arising from the minutes, is there any business that needs to be dealt with at this time? Not seeing any noted. Item number six is a public hearing scheduled for the two o'clock hour, so we'll return to item number six. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, 7.1, to the city manager.
Good afternoon, your worship and council, and happy new year. First item on the agenda today is annexation consulting services and the recommendation before you is that council approve the sole source to engage ISL, Engineering and Land Services to provide professional services for the remainder of the annexation process. The city provided a formal notice of intent to annex lands in 2014 with discussions and negotiations being held for the county since that time. ISL has provided professional services and mainly the joint growth study was their main role to date and recommended to continue with the same professional firm to maintain consistency and avoid additional costs of onboarding another firm mid-project. On June 8th, 2020, council approved a motion to submit an annexation application to the MGB as proceeding to the MGB will expand the annexation process longer than originally anticipated. A new approval is required to continue to engage in ISL in the process, so the options are before you. The governance implications as part of our procurement policy, council approval is required to sole source a value over $50,000 and it's estimated at this time in the 2021 budget that the fees will be about $100,000 for consultation services of ISL, so. I'll turn it back to you, worship.
Thank you, city manager. Is there any questions or comments? I've got councillor Torrison.
Thank you, your worship. I just had a quick question as far as, longer than I anticipated. When we say that within this IR request for decision, is it just longer than when we did our initial application back in June? That the date has changed that we need to do it? Or is there something new that we don't know as far as, you know, dates of when we're anticipating that this will go to the MGB?
No, nothing has changed since the June 8th, 2020 meeting. Just a longer than approved, like when we hired ISL, it was mainly for the joint growth study at that time. And so that's the intended wording around, longer than intended use for ISL services.
So it's more on their contract side of things that, you know, there's been at least a scope change enough so that we're extending that service, you know, to a much later date than was originally anticipated?
Yeah, and I would also add that probably, and we'll see one later on as well, that some clarifications probably required within our policy document to authorize some of these, we're just trying to stay within policy at this point, ensuring we're within those guidelines. But yeah, nothing's changed since the June 8th meeting.
Okay, just generally, you know, I think ISL has provided us excellent service. I don't see any value whatsoever in going somewhere else as far as those services go for annexation. I think we would lose a lot of money as a city if we were to start reinventing the wheel with a new consultant. So to me, this is, makes perfect sense.
Thank you councillor. Any other comments councillor?
Thank you, your worship, and I think that you've clarified this already, I just want to ask it another way. So we anticipate that with this new addition of the fee, that that will go right to the end of the expenses with them? That we wouldn't need to renew a contract?
Yeah, this contract is intended to go to the end now. Depending on the process, it could take, could take two weeks, it could take six months. We don't know that process, so the dollar amount could be, you know, $10,000, it could be $120,000. So it's, it all depends on how long the process is and how long the hearings take place and how much extra work that they may be required to do depending on the information they're asked to provide during the hearing.
Okay, thank you, and also I think this is just an easy decision to make because as councillor Torrison said, we don't want to, you know, go back to the drawing board and start over with a new company. So for me, it's an easy decision.
Agreed.
I think that certainly that onboarding cost, that's the bottom line is to go through the process, to bring somebody up to speed. We know administration time is there, but it's time they would spend otherwise helping bring another consultant up to speed as well as the review time they would have, because that wouldn't come for free. So I think that working with ISL, they've done the preliminary work, they're very familiar with the file. They're up to date and up to speed, as the city manager said, this is, we have it budgeted amount. We hope that to come in well within the budget, but it will depend on process. And since this is a process we don't usually walk through with the MGB board on a regular basis. We're kind of, as they've done, they've set a budget and will hopefully be as close as we can be to that budgeted number or less. We go over, it'll come back to council for further approvals if required.
Any further discussion before I ask someone to set direction from council? I'll look to council for direction on this item. Councillor Dycheck.
Move that council approve the sole source to engage ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited to provide professional services for the remainder of the annexation process.
Secondaire, councillor Fagin, thank you very much. Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to 7.1.2, back to you city manager.
Thank you, worship, for 7.1.2, the Vicjuba Community Theatre Agreement. I'm gonna ask our executive manager, Community Development Services, Tracy Simpson, to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship and council.
Good afternoon, Tracy.
Yeah, today we're here looking for authorization to enter into a three-year agreement with the Vicjuba Community Theatre Board at a cost of $181,500 for this year, 2021, and a 2% increase for 2022 and 2023. The annual third-party funding is being moved into this multi-year funding agreement as per request from council. Some of the highlights from the agreement that we've negotiated include a three-year term as mentioned. We will require the board to carry out programs associated with the theater and it'll give the city the ability to alter the funding should their requirements of programming not be met. We're requesting that they acknowledge the city's contribution in all promotional and advertising tools. In addition, we're asking for partnerships on capital projects through our annual city budgeting process. This will include the board providing the city with both a five-year and a 10-year capital plan. That's all I have for you, if I have any questions.
Thank you very much. Look to council for questions or comments. Councillor Mann.
Thank you, your worship. So I just have one quick question and it's regarding highlight number two, a requirement to carry out programs associated with the theater and ability for the city to alter the funding should requirements not be met. Can you give an example of what that would be?
Absolutely. I think last year was a perfect example with the pandemic shutting down in-person theater viewing. Should something like that ever happen again, it gives the city the opportunity to alter our funding should no programming being allowed and we need to redirect those funds.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Torrison.
Thank you, your worship. I was just gonna mention on that point too, I think that given where we're at and some of our relationships with some of the other organizations just like this one, for example, the library. I think, I think that if we don't necessarily put that, not that the libraries was this specific case, but if we don't put something like that, then there may be incentive to hang on to money for different programs that maybe aren't necessarily, or saving for things that aren't necessarily goals that have been communicated to the city. So I just think that it's important that, that we, if we're gonna have a three-year agreement, that we do have kind of what we'll call an audit on the programs itself to ensure that with the money that's being given to the different organizations, they're carrying out, you know, the overall purpose of why they are receiving the money. So having something like that is really important to me to have built into this agreement, that's good to see on there. The other thing that I think is good is moving in this three-year direction. It's mentioned in this, in this item, but I think it's really important giving them the ability to kind of actually go through a strategic planning process so that they can create goals and they can, you know, kind of create programs and do them over a couple of years rather than going through the, are we gonna get full funding this year or not and trying to decide what they're going to do and what they're not going to do. So this type of program, I think, will be a lot better for seeing even better performance from the Vicjuba Community Theater in the future. I think it's a good idea.
Thanks councillor. Councillor Whiting and then councillor Buckingham.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I like, obviously, I think anybody would like to see predictable funding over the course of years, a few years. So I'm very much glad to see this coming through in this format. Questions are, just for some, for background history purposes, what was the ask or, I guess, the give for last year or maybe a year prior or something like that, just to see that are we in the same ballpark? Is this the same funding that they have historically gotten and it's just put into a three-year term? And I think, I might have had another question, but it's left me now, so.
Yeah, the 181.5 is the amount that they were, we contributed in 2020.
Sorry, what was that number?
181.5, so same for 2021 and then there's a 2% increase from that point forward. The one part that is a little bit different is the capital component, we've never offered them a capital option before and given what we've gone through with some of our buildings this past year, we felt it was important to add that component in there and Tracy and I did it and Denise did a tour on Thursday and we can see some of the, whether it's a coat of paint, whether it's minor things, the audio equipment, things like that that need updating and things like that. So if, if we don't start doing that now, we're gonna end up with a much bigger ask down the road, so.
It'll be, I'll be interested to see, moving forward, how that comes forward to council as, you know, capital expenditure meaning just the building envelope itself or the internals, and that'll be a good fun little question and answer to have. The other question I guess I did have was, how did we come to the number 181.5? And I, I'm assuming that that's a thought out, thought out number and it's reflective of something that they've worked on to get to that number?
Yeah, to be honest, it was a number that's always been in the budget, maybe councillor Buckingham can answer if I'm offline here, but it's a number that they've, they requested in, during the third-party ask. I think even they're up in the 200,000 range in their third-party ask last year, so it was just in line with what they've asked in past years. And we've been able to monitor their financial statements through their, them providing the minutes and so forth through our front report and stuff like that. So unless councillor Buckingham may be able to expand a little further, but I think it's along their budget, it lines up with their budget.
Yeah, it's very similar to what has been asked for in the past and there's lots of good things that go along with this. I think there was a time you could say that the city kind of forgot that they own Vicjuba Theatre as far as planning for long-term things went. There are long-term capital projects that need to be taken a look at, the building is getting older and there are seat replacements and audio replacements, roof issues, things like that that need to be budgeted for. I can tell you as the, as the council representative on the Vicjuba Board, the strap plan was revised in December of 2020. So that's gonna be coming forward and ready to come to council as far, or as well as the budgeting process and capital ask has already been worked on, on a three-year basis at this point and is coming forward. So it's all being worked on and the board's done a great job of straightening things. I don't want to say straightening things out because it wasn't crooked in the first place, but it's come together really well. And the planning is good between the city and the vic and this is just good, smart, long-range planning and like you said, sustainable funding so that the theater knows exactly what it's got going forward and getting away from everybody coming in and doing these third-party asks in numerous ways as direction councils wanted to go. And I see the value in it from this one in particular, sitting on the board and seeing how that's helping them to plan and giving them some comfortability, and I think that's all very positive.
Councillor Whiting, anything else? Yeah, great. Councillor Buckingham, you did want to speak, or was that too?
Yeah, that's kind of led right into everything I wanted to say, so it's just, it's a good practice and a good process and it's gonna make the city and the Vicjuba's relationship more cohesive and streamlined as we go forward and not end up in a train wreck down the road like the city manager was saying with a huge ask all of a sudden because we didn't plan properly. So this is a good step in long-range planning.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's been well said, I think that the need that, and we're gonna go through that throughout this agenda, talking about future planning and asset management and the Vicjuba is an asset owned by the city, operated by the Vicjuba Board. It is connected to the college, we have a relationship, a three-way agreement that manages and oversees the Vicjuba, but at the end of the day, the city is responsible for this envelope and the contents basically of that building. So we do have some obligations and I'm glad to hear that it's being addressed because certainly capital is going to be a continued challenge for us, but if we have it on the list and we tackle a little bit at a time, it'll be much easier than having a half a million or a million dollars come to council to keep the Vicjuba moving in the right direction from the inside. So, much appreciated.
Last call for any comments or questions. Not seeing any, I'll look to council for direction on 7.1.2, the Vicjuba Community Theatre Agreement. Councillor Whiting.
I move that council authorize the city to enter a three-year agreement with the Vicjuba Community Theatre Board at a cost of $181,500 for 2021 and a 2% increase for 2022 and 2023. Additionally, that the mayor and city court be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you very much. Secondaire councillor Buckingham, thank you. Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much.
Mayor Alvarez?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you for one second? I was gonna say this at the start of the meeting, just, I may turn my camera off and be muted, but I will let you know if I'm actually away and not listening.
Okay.
I'll have it on for voting, but just having three small people here, I tend to have to mute things, run out of the room quickly, break up fights, that kind of thing. So just so you know, if my camera's off, that doesn't mean I'm not here and I will let the city clerk know if I'm actually not in the room.
Alright councillor, appreciate that. I didn't see your referee outfit on today, but I understand what you're up to today, so it's all good. Moving on to 7.1.3, city manager.
Thank you, worship, for 7.1.3, startup Lloydminster Agreement. I will present and Catlin is on the Zoom for backup, should there be any questions. But along the same lines as the Vicjuba Agreement, the recommendation today is to authorize the city to enter into a three-year agreement with startup Lloydminster, Lloydminster and Region Incubator Board at a cost of $80,000 for 2021 and again, a 2% increase for 22 and 23, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. The background is startup Lloydminster has historically functioned to support entrepreneurs by offering business coaching, networking opportunities and professional learning opportunities or learning events. Entrepreneurs are a large part of our Lloydminster identity and for the better part of a decade, Lloydminster consistently ranked amongst the Canadian Federation of Independent Businesses' top 10 entrepreneurial communities. Startup Lloydminster's funding requests would move from a third-party ask to a budgeted operational expense under economic development, funding startup Lloydminster as an entrepreneurial development leg of economic development. Starting and maintaining a small business can be a challenge and COVID-19 has only added to that challenge. A business incubator helps nurture companies until they have established themselves firmly within the community and new entrepreneurs can look at startup Lloydminster for hands-on management, assistance, education, information, technical and vital, business support services, networking resources, financial advice and as well as advice on where to go for financial services. So I guess I'll turn it back to you again, along the same lines, it was a third-party ask. Now we're looking at a longer-term three-year agreement as one of the four organizations that we looked at, the library, Vicjuba, startup and one more to come yet is the SPCA, thank you. I'll turn it back to you, your worship.
Thank you, city manager. Questions, comments? Councillor Dycheck.
Thank you, worship. I guess a couple of things, one is, you know, the obvious of sort of like funding that you can count on over the next three years being cornerstone of this, but I think secondarily, if we've been watching the news, that one of the pieces that we heard from multiple layers of government is that the challenges coming ahead are around economic development and getting us back on our feet, and I think, you know, this is one of the small things we can do to ensure that the resources available for existing and new businesses are there, support them and contribute to our economy and our community, so I think this makes good sense.
Thank you councillor, councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I'd echo those comments by councillor Dycheck and also, I guess it's a bit of a question. I would say that this particular type of business development through economic development is well-suited to startup and potentially more economical to the city to have startup run a function like this than it would be to have it in-house.
I can't even see, Catlin, you want to answer that?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, your worship and councillor Buckingham. Yes, it is, we aren't just looking at one person, we're looking at an entire ecosystem when we look at the dollars that, what that we're spending and the services and the availability we get. We're in a position where consistency and predictability for our business community is extremely important. I will echo those statements, but also add that startup does, does offer all of those things for startups, but also for our businesses and our entrepreneurs who are shifting or pivoting, and we know that they are right now as well as expanding into different pieces. We need to spend a little bit more attention on startups right now and the startup Lloydminster does just that with their, with their ecosystem and with the, with the services and pieces that they're able to offer. So we offer that $80,000 a year, but they have other funding methods as well that help support a bigger, greater organization.
Yeah, thanks Catlin, that was, that was my thoughts exactly too, so I think it's, it's a good investment on the city's behalf and good for the city as a whole as we continue to grow, diversify and come back out of what we've been experiencing the last while, so thanks for that.
Councillor Torrison.
Yeah, two things. I wanted to echo kind of what I heard within the room, just as far as, you know, by doing this rather than having an in-house person, so let's say you had kind of an intermediate person within the city who is at an $80,000 a year wage plus benefits. We're essentially using this to leverage it against all the other grants that this group has access to.
Um, we're essentially using this to leverage it against all the other grants that this group has access to, that they can build a team in that ecosystem, as Catlin mentioned, so that they can they can take that eighty thousand dollars and go a lot further with it. And and I think actually the consistency of uh the money that the city puts into it is probably one of the most important things because the other grants that they receive um from the other levels of government and and whatever else that they use for their operations, those change annually every few years. There might be different ones that they have access to, uh, but just having even this consistent amount um will give them the ability to leverage off of that so that they can have a larger kind of system that they can help more businesses expand or start up. So I think from that perspective, you know, if you're talking about Moneyball of how do you get the most kind of new business startup type of economic development for the least amount of money, uh, this is one way to do it. Um, the other the other thought I had um was just generally, uh, this is something I know we've talked about the last few years. And and I'm kind of curious, Catlin, are we developing anything or working with them to develop to see uh what success looks like for the money we spend outside of just them having the ability to get more grant money? I just want to know that um we can say uh there's a success with this program and it's I don't know how we measure that, and I'm just curious if there is a way that we've been working our way through to see if if we can ensure that there's that accountability piece to it uh with with us spending the money on it.
Absolutely, and and accountability is really important. So a few of our measurables that we've added um is the client served, the attendance to workshops and seminars um as well as their work their co-work space. So they have the co-work space, obviously not open right now due to current restrictions. Um, but having that space available and counting every single person that uses that space for business purposes um as well as the referrals to their startup mentors, coaches, and partnering organizations. So not just the people that they work with, but their partners work with, all is being counted and and recorded. Um, and then we've added the number of referrals to our business license application as well.
Awesome. Thank you. So will that be reported back to council annually or or are we asking it to be part of their annual report?
As part of their annual report, um, those are all listed. Um, they they do have to include their annual audited financial statements as well, but on top of that is is all of those things that I've listed.
Okay, thank you.
City manager.
Think along the lines of your comment, Counselor Torson, is uh one of the things COVID's done is it's uh uh improved the working relationship between the city's economic development department as well, along with the Chamber, Mini Futures, Startup. And it has uh really improved that line of communication, and I think it needs to uh once COVID is done. I think that's one of the things Catlin and I have talked about, keeping that momentum of working together and keep that communication flowing at all times. So we know what's happening. It's not just an annual report coming back and we don't hear from them all year. It's going to be an ongoing uh communication length that's going to be there uh throughout the year.
That sounds great.
Counselor Merron.
Thank you, your worship. So um I had the privilege of of do it like being in at startup Lloydminster pre-COVID and and also participating in some of the sessions that they've offered online and talked with many business owners that have accessed the services. And it's significant for them to have the services available to them to strengthen their existing business or to get their new business, their new startup off the ground. So just congratulations on the work that's being done uh by startup and by all of the the people who are supporting that work. Um, I don't have a question. I just um, I think that when we talk about what success looks like, it's important. Thanks for that comment, uh, Counselor Torson, because it's important for us to really think about what does economic recovery look like for us coming out of COVID? And this will be one of those things that we can really measure and identify as being successful. I think it's a great investment for all residents of Lloydminster to have this because um economic recovery will benefit all of us.
Absolutely, Counselor. Well said. I think that what we've heard here in this discussion, funding partnership is critical. It's been part of the discussion for some time, uh, as long as I've served here. I know this uh LEDC, as it was known beforehand, was a fundamental partner in startup when it was the incubator. And we've seen it progress. We've seen the developments and the benefits it had to the community, the businesses and the rewards to just not our own community, but outside the work that they do in the neighboring areas. So I think that this is a funding partnership and in that way for some time. And I think we can't lose track of that. And I think that as it was discussed, we can't put someone in place for the for these dollars as a one standalone, as a city employee to pick it up and be able to leverage federal monies, and I believe there's provincial monies and they apply for other programming and work with sectors that sometimes don't always get the attention they deserve in the community, helping especially entrepreneurs, individuals, single people that want to get started and uh just can't leverage all the pieces together. So it helps bring the expertise. I think it's a great step forward, giving them a three year commitment, gives them again some time to plan and move forward with a strategic plan. Counselor.
Thank you, your worship, and just one more comment because maybe our community doesn't recognize this, but Alberta Innovates um has their office right in startup Lloydminster. And so I think that's a really a really good strength of the the service as well.
Exactly. Back to that partnership again, uh, having someone from the provincial government, especially in that avenue where they're looking to create uh new opportunities and to diversify our economy, it fits very well. So I think it all plays hand in hand very well. Any other comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction on seven point one point three startup Lloydminster Agreement. Counselor Whitey.
That council authorize the city to enter a three year agreement with startup Lloydminster, also known or used to be known as Lloydminster Region Incubator Board at a cost of eighty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one and a two percent increase for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Additionally, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you. Second or Counselor Merron? Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, city manager and Catlin for that presentation.
Yeah, just a quick, that's not new funding, by the way. That's that's money that we've provided in the past for a one year operating agreement. So that's not a new eighty thousand dollars. That is eighty thousand that we've spent in the past or in that ballpark.
Absolutely. That used to go through a much different process, the third party funding. It's the we've had some difficulties trying to get to a process where it seems it gives the the folks that are working with the city stable funding predictions in this by going to these three year agreements such as Vicuba, startup and uh the library, things like that makes it just a huge difference to their operation so they can plan accordingly. So thank you. Good point, city manager. Moving on to seven point one point four and to the city manager.
Thank you, your worship, for seven point one point four, city of Lloydminster Strategic Planning Process. I will ask the Chief of Staff, Marie Pready, to present.
Can I stop you? Sorry, my apologies. I just the deputy mayor brought it to my attention. We've just passed the two o'clock hour. So I will put you on pause if I may. Ms. Pready, and uh we'll move to the public hearing. Thank you very much, city manager, or uh deputy mayor. Oh, you want the city manager, yeah. All right, let's get started with the public hearing for January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, the land use bylaw amendment, development permit validity. I would like to note before we begin that during the public hearing, we ask that you respect the views of everyone here and allow each person their time to speak without interruption. Each each person wishing to speak has up to five minutes to make a presentation to council. All discussions of council members, city staff, and delegations shall be directed to the chairperson. Any questions brought forward by the public which would not be able to be addressed during this meeting will be done so at the next council meeting. Council will not debate this matter during this hearing. The decision regarding whether to grant the bylaw further readings will be dealt with following the public hearing. I declare the public hearing for bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Development Permit Validity Bylaw, open at two oh three P M. I would ask the city clerk to confirm whether this public hearing has been advertised in accordance with the applicable legislation and to summarize the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, your worship. I confirm that this public hearing has been advertised and notice has been provided in accordance with the applicable legislation. This public hearing was advertised in the Meridian Source on December twenty-fourth and thirty-first, twenty twenty. The purpose of this public hearing is for bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting development permit validity.
Thank you, city clerk. I will now call upon anyone wishing to speak who is opposed to the proposed bylaw. Not seeing anyone come forward, I will now call upon anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed bylaw. Not seeing anyone coming forward, I will now call upon anyone else wishing to speak who is affected by the proposed bylaw. As no members of the public were in attendance to speak on the matter, I declare the public hearing for bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty closed at two oh five P M. Now we will return back to the agenda item of seven point one point four, city manager through to Chief of Staff.
Uh, thank you and good afternoon, mayor and council. Our recommendation today is that council accept this report as information. We are here today to provide council with an update on the city of on the city of Lloydminster's strategic planning process. City council adopted the city's existing strategic plan for two thousand seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one in October of two thousand and seventeen. The strategic plan provides citizens, businesses, administration, and other stakeholders with a high level overview of city's vision for the future of Lloydminster. City council governance role includes the mandate to provide strategic direction. The strategic plan embodies that direction while supporting administration in operational planning. Annually, city council and members of senior administration review the series of goals and strategies and provide a summary, including what the strategy identified is as the desired for achievement and performance measures, including how each strategy and goal is measured, targeted timelines, and which team is taking the lead role. The most recent update was completed in June of twenty twenty, and all annual updates can be found on the city's website. Administration is proposing proposing the following process for updating the current strategic plan. In January of two thousand and twenty-one, and we've started this process last week, administration will compile information and status updates on existing goals from the two thousand seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one strategic plan. The executive leadership team will select a consultant to lead the process with council in early March. At the end of January, the executive leadership team will review the plan update and determine goals that have been considered completed and goals that may need to be processed, proposed to council to bring forward into the new plan. We are proposing that in my early March, a date to be determined, there would be a strategic planning session with the consultant, council, and the executive leadership team to develop a new city of Lloydminster strategic plan. And at some point after March, this would this uh draft plan would come back to council and council would bring it back to the public for review and then for approval. The options today are that council accept this information as this report as information or that council request further information on this item and it be brought forward to a regular council meeting for further discussion. Thank you, mayor. I'll pass it back for questions or comments.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, chief of staff. Questions or comments? Counselor Whitey.
Just uh, yeah, looking forward to the strategic planning and uh and and the process and and what comes out of it. Uh, my only little comment would be, is there any need to have stated in here uh what comes after March first, you know, or a deadline or a date or anything? I know there's lots of space between March and I I would assume would when I am I right in assuming that we probably approve the strategic plan in October, kind of one year, well, would have been, I guess, suppose around one year from election just prior to the twenty twenty-two, the strategic plan would be twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six, is that right?
And that's some of the, thank you, uh, counselor, and that's some of the items that council can discuss in March at that timeframe and can make the decision then to start a new plan in twenty twenty-two or to start a plan partway through twenty twenty-one, which would go for whatever the timeline that council chooses at that time.
Right. Okay, so it's a little bit flexible towards in.
Yeah, a lot of those discussions will take place at that March meeting.
That's good.
City manager.
Yeah, part of that as well would be this would line up with our our business planning and budgeting process for twenty twenty-two. So, you know, if we could have this completed, you know, mid-year type thing as we start our budgeting process and developing our business plans that this council's goals and objectives in the strategic plan would be implemented into the into that so that we can we can start incorporating. I think October might be a little too late for that. I think we'd want to have something in by, I would say, June. That June timeline would be my would be our goal, at least on if you guys choose different, that that's okay, but that's our initial onset would be to have it ready for the business plan and budgeting process for twenty twenty-two.
Counselor Torson, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I understand there's relatively tight timelines in this. Um, and I'm just speaking for myself, but if that week of March first, you know, the earlier we can do that, the better. So if it ended up being uh the last week of February, that would be, you know, more ideal to me. I now work in public practice, so I'm already in busy season. But once you get to March, it becomes uh very difficult to do anything that's not being at work. So uh, for me personally anyway, so I know everyone's got a a thing, but um, February is a much better month for me, but I'll I'll make it work whatever I have to do. Um, and I guess it really depends on whether or not we can get the consultant that uh administration has in mind.
Point well taken, Counselor, and uh we'll look to administration. They'll explore that as best as they can. Any comments, city manager?
Yeah, we've we've uh, as Maria indicated, we've started working with or looking at consultants. And we've looked at the one that developed our previous strategic plan and and see if that price and everything works within that timeline and everything. So so we can uh take that into consideration when we go to set a date. And last weekend of February or first week of March, I don't think is, you know, indifferent to us. It's more your guys' ability and timeframes, uh, time availability that will impact the the timing.
Okay. Counselor Fagin.
I ju- just wondering, what's the ballpark figure on the the cost of a consultant?
Ballpark figure, seventy-five hundred dollars plus tax.
Just, you know, just taking a look at it, uh, when we 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 take a look at, there's a we've we've got some pretty good bones there already in that strategic plan. And, you know, just thinking that there might not be that, you know, that much. I'm just wondering if there's anybody local that might be able to uh to carry on with that. And it's just a just a thought. We've got some, we've got some skilled people here through the college and the school divisions and and many other professionals. It's just, I throw that out there just to take a look at that.
Good call, Counselor, and I think we'll leave that to administration to do some exploring on that and to report back. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, your worship. I would I would uh agree with Counselor Fagin's comments. You know what? I think I'd like to look at it fairly holistically in that um the strategic plan has uh the previous council stamp all over it, of course. Now we've got, you know, two new counselors and a new a new city council, right? So as much as I would love to say, yeah, we can probably just tweak and whatever, we need to make sure we give everybody the opportunity to have their stamp on it in this term as well. So I think it's just important to have that said because uh it does come with some history.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction from council on seven point one point four. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, your worship. I move the council accept this report as information.
Fagin and Counselor Dyatchuk, thank you very much. Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, carried. Moving on to seven point two, the offices city clerk, I'll look to the city manager for seven point two point one.
Thank you, your worship, for seven point two point one, Lloydminster Charter Amendments. I'll ask the city clerk, Doug Rodwell, to present.
Thank you, your worship, council. The item before you is amendments to the Lloydminster Charter. And the recommendation is that council truck the mayor to make written application to the provinces of Alberta and Saskatchewan pursuant to the process outlined in Lloydminster Charter, requesting that it be amended by complimentary orders in council. Administration has identified several areas of the Lloydminster Charter that should be amended to to better reflect life in the city of Lloydminster. Lloydminster Charter was last updated on January first, twenty thirteen. Due to the uniqueness of the city of Lloydminster and its bi-provincial nature, there are circumstances where differing provincial legislation on the respective sides of the city is not the most effective means of governments governance. Administration has maintained an active listing of matters where Lloydminster Charter could be amended to better serve its purpose of creating a seamless city. Administration has maintained an active listing of matters where Lloydminster Charter could be amended to better serve its purpose of creating a seamless city. Section eleven point, eleven, eleven, one of the Lloydminster Charter allows for the city to request the provincial ministers for a change of Lloydminster Charter by complimentary orders in Council. The first step to requesting the change is for the mayor to provide written application to the provinces. The options are that the Council direct the mayor to make that application, or that Council requests further information. This item is in alignment with the following strategic area, open and responsive government, ensuring the Lloydminster Charter provides the city of Lloydminster with the tools and clarity required to govern in across provincial city and allows the city to govern in a way that is effective and responsive to Lloydminster. And the government implications are following any amendments to Lloydminster Charter, administration may be required to update applicable governance documents. Back to you, your worship.
Thank you, City Clerk. Before I ask, go around the table, I just wanted to state a few things. In discussions with the City Clerk and the City Manager, there's been many issues over the last four years that the former Council dealt with and were brought to our attention. And I think it's important to again explain to residents, the Lloydminster Charter is the Government of Saskatchewan, the Government of Alberta's act that governs how the city is governed and how it operates from our perspective. So we look to the Lloydminster Charter as our official rulebook, in essence, to how things happen. And every so often, those rules continuously change at the provincial level. Both Alberta has updated the Municipal Government Act, which relates to all the other municipalities in Alberta. The Government of Saskatchewan has updated the Cities Act, and at the same time, we found issues that, and I'll talk about it here, policing. We've had this discussion before around this table and continue to have that conversation with Saskatchewan. The Charter needs to be updated and amended to correct that problem with funding for policing services that the Government of Saskatchewan could help support. So I think this is, it's very imperative that we move forward with this from that perspective. We have just recently, we had a change of minister in Alberta. I had spoke to the former minister before she resigned about this, and she was on site. Haven't had, and I've chatted with the department staff or Chief of Staff for the minister in Saskatchewan. We haven't had a chance directly to talk about it, but it has been talked about at the Cabinet Table, I believe, because each of the last couple former ministers of municipal government relations in Saskatchewan, and we've had a few of those changed due to the election and things. They were aware that the Charter exists. They realize that we do have some questions and concerns because we are the ones that are totally affected by it. No one else in either province has any, is really affected by the Charter other than the residents, the City Council, and the city of Lloydminster, so. With that, I'll turn it over. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, your worship. You've probably heard me state it publicly before that I was very concerned about opening the Charter in past history. I wanted to make sure that opening the Charter was going to be more beneficial than not because initially my thoughts were, why open this Charter? There are some great things in there that the governments on either side of the, of the border could take back that are, that are good for the city. However, in reviewing the Charter numerous times now and with some of the things the mayor's pointed out, I think it is okay to go ahead with it, but I just wanted to say that there are the risks that come with opening the Charter as well, but I've changed my perspective on being completely uncomfortable with it to being more comfortable with it for some of the things that the city could benefit by, by doing this Charter revision. So, but it, it's something I thought a lot about as far as the risk that goes with it as well.
Counselor, that's a very good comment. I think that the City Clerk and I have discussed that because there is always that issue that the province, one of the provinces or both the provinces might remove something, but we'll certainly, I think, the approach the City Clerk's proposed, that we start with the letter. We'll have a package prepared to give them an idea of what we're looking for. We can make it as simplistic for them as possible because as you can appreciate, the bills of government don't always turn as fast as possible. We can hopefully keep this fairly neat and tidy. That would be our, our option, our preferred option, but we'll see as we go. And this is one of the challenges. You've hit it. When you open something, you never know where it's going to go.
There are some things that if I just follow up on that quickly, there are some things here that being a border city comes with what people call challenges, but I also like to think of it as comes with many opportunities as well, and some of those opportunities that Lloydminster has are within that Charter. And I'd hate to see some of those things go away. So, but you, you guys will take a good look at that and carry it forward, but just wanted to have those comments out there.
Absolutely. Counsel Dychuk.
Thanks, your worship. I, I think, a couple of things. One is that I think the Charter definitely opens the door to possibilities, and those possibilities can result in perhaps some changes to the way we function, but I think it's important to remember that, one, we would certainly be working in step with our MLAs to ensure that any changes we see are ones that they would be in support of. Secondarily, I think one of the messages that in working at making changes to Charter in the past is every Alberta resident in the city of Lloydminster has the same rights as any other Alberta residents in the rest of the province. Slimmerly, any other resident who lives on the Saskatchewan side of the city of Lloydminster has the same rights as any other resident in Saskatchewan. So as people begin to think about tinkering about that, the reality is the government has an obligation to ensure that they honor those particular benefits that are really meant to be provided to every citizen in each of those respective provinces. So I think that's the cautionary piece around it that I think we, we can benefit from and, and hold each province to account. There are mismatches in legislation, and I think we've addressed some of them in the past relative to, for instance, taxation, where we only can have one mill rate for the entire city, and the mill rate structures are different, different, pardon me, in each side of the border. And, and we've, we've finally got some accommodations from the province relative to education, where our schools in the city of Lloydminster were not being penalized because we weren't charging as high a mill rate, even though it was entirely different. But we were forced to have a harmonized mill rate, and in some ways, we're actually overtaxing Alberta residents. So there are some benefits and there are some challenges, but certainly I would, I would hope that as we do this and proceed that we are, are working in step with our MLAs and ensure that they understand challenges as we see them, so they can be our allies and our champions going forward into the Cabinet.
Point well taken, and again, that discussion has, I've undertaken that discussion with both MLAs, let them know that we were interested in doing this, and we'll certainly convey that through the messaging as we go to the boards of ministers that way. That's what Council so approves. I've got Counselor Torson, then I'll call the Counselor, Mayor. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I, you know, I believe from everything that, that we know about the changing legislation and where the Charter's sitting and, and how much, I guess, how many updates there's been to the Cities Act in Saskatchewan and the MGA in Alberta, that there's likely, you know, some gaps, and then we have gaps that we know that exist on, on our own just from, you know, different events and things that have happened. But I'm really curious, you know, maybe it's appropriate for this meeting, but like, what are, what are the hits? What are the highlights? What are some areas where, other than policing, which, you know, that one's pretty obvious, where we're really missing out on something, and then if there are risks that we believe exist, you know, what are those? You don't necessarily have to list them all in this meeting, but I just think that prior to that letter actually going out, that our Council has at least briefed on what we perceive some of those risks and what we're chasing to be prior to that letter, you know, getting ink on it and being sent out.
Thank you, Counselor. Great question. I'm going to look to the City Clerk because he is the expert when I look to the Charter.
Thank you, Counselor, for that question. We actually do have a fairly comprehensive list, and we'd be happy to share that with Council. Obviously, we don't want to share that outward. We want to make sure that that's between the governments and us because we don't want to be seen as negotiating in public. So we'd be more than happy to share that documentation with, with Council. Council is absolutely correct. Whenever you take, take under, on something like this, you, there are risks. We recognize that we'd probably be brought to a higher standard in some areas of reporting, but there's also some major gaps in, in legislation that are causing us to miss out on things as well. And as the mayor speaks to police funding and those other type of items.
Counselor.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add that, you know, this is a task that really doesn't happen that often. Yes, it happened in two thousand and thirteen, but I think before that time, there was a considerable amount of time from the prior amendments to that. And, and the task is somewhat monumental at times, but I think that our administration has indicated in the past that there's some things that we really should be considering changing. So I think it's, it's great to see that this, this new Council is saying, yeah, big tasks, we'll, we'll get after it. It's, it's what we do. It's, it's what we're representing. It's what we're representing the people for, is to ensure that we have an ideal document for how we go about governing the city and everything that happens in it, so. I think that it's a good idea to do it, and I think that our administration's up to the task, and they'll have the full supportive of our Council through this process.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, and, and so thank you, Counselor Torson, for your question as well. I think that, you know, we're early in our mandate, and it's really an opportunity for us to take this big task and see it right through because we're early in our mandate, so we won't be changing our, our Council during that time, so let's get it done. We also see that the Alberta government isn't even at halfway of their mandate, and the Saskatchewan government is new in their mandate. So I think now is the right time to open up the Lloydminster Charter and really take a good look at it. The question that I had was, it just indicated that you maintained an active listing of the matters that could be amended, and so I was going to request that we have an opportunity to look at that and lay it over the Lloydminster Charter just to see if that'll make sense to us as well as the Council, so thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. You mentioned both of those very important points. Because of where the governments are in their cycle, it is important. Move this to the fourth year of one of the government's mandates would be likely not in our best interests. Ideally, we hope that this is an open, dealt with, and closed again in a relatively reasonable fashion. I could ask the City Clerk to just tell us what the last time the experience was, if he could, if he could, from the information he's been able to glean. Sometimes it's been easy, sometimes it's been hard. City Clerk, would you like to comment on the last time that the Charter was opened?
Yeah, the, the previous Charter amendment took approximately ten years to get to the air, to the current legislation we have. It's our hope that when we present a comprehensive list that the provinces recognize that we've been fair, equitable, and balanced in, in what we're presenting, and that hopefully speeds up the process. So we're hoping before the end of their mandates that that's up to the two governments. I, I do want to caution Council that even though we make application to the governments, they might not necessarily want to amend the Charter either. They may say we're not ready to do that.
That's exactly. Thank you, City Clerk. I think there's numerous pieces to this puzzle. It's not as, the letter is the start, and we wait and see what kind of reception, like I say, from the former minister in Alberta had a positive response to the idea, and the same from Saskatchewan, but again, I haven't had a chance to have conversations with Minister MacIver in Alberta or Minister McMorris directly, partly due to the pandemic we're in, to have those reassurances that we'll have open ears, but we have touch base with the MLAs and they're certainly. Counselor Whiting.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I was, I was around for the, for the signing of the last one, but I wasn't involved in any of the process or knowing any of the timelines. And I was going to ask about the timeline. Mayor Albert's asked that already. But I wanted to know about inside those pieces that you are looking at revising. Out of, out of those pieces, you know, how much of those are a financial implication to the city where we aren't getting our fair share or something like that? Other, and then there's obviously going to be pieces that just allow for good governance or cleaning, cleaner governance perhaps, or easier legislative, you know, follow a more cleaner line of governance. So out of those pieces, you know, how much is there a potentially a dollar amount that the city is losing out on by not having this, and is that something that we can use when we're looking at revising this Charter?
Well, without getting into specifics, I can answer one area. For example, our recently Council dealt with bringing on a necessity to our industrial properties. Everywhere else in Alberta, that's paid for by the province of Alberta, and we're currently paying for that service because it's not dealt with in the Charter. So that's sort of an example where, where we're, where we're, where we're having to deal up. When we talk about police funding in Saskatchewan, police funding is set out under the Police Act. And the way the Charter is set up, we follow the Alberta. So we're missing out on those type of things. So those, those are the type of areas that we're, we're short folding, you know. When we look at this, we're looking to add some clarity on several acts and how they apply in the city. Maybe, you know, annual reviews and adding language from the updated Saskatchewan Cities Act and the Modernized Municipal Government Act. So it's, it's, it's not, I don't want to make this oversimplified and say that it's going to be an easy piece of negotiation or discussions, but hopefully when we, when we get to those pieces, we can, we can even out those areas that we're, we're, we're shorted in.
Certainly, certainly part of it is a financial lack of, or not a loss, it's just a lack of, lack of revenue in some ways. I, from my understanding, some of those pieces would cause us to increase revenue, and some of them are just for clarity, so I just wanted to ensure that, that I just wanted to ask that question to see if there was any input on, on how much maybe we're missing, but I know it's a bit early in the game to talk about too much of the details.
Yeah, until the ink has dried and we know what they are giving us for, if they give us the revised Charter, what does that involve? Certainly, it would, it would help in the discussions and negotiations and advocacy work with the province to discuss those, those items. Any other questions or comments? Counselor, Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, and, and as we're discussing this, I'm just realizing more and more that I would really appreciate a little bit of an education session around the Charter and, and the, you know, proposed amendments that you would make, just so I really have a good understanding of that. So I'll just leave that with you to think about if that's possible someday.
Certainly.
Certainly, I love the Charter, so you'll charter it one-on-one anytime.
I would suggest to bring a big cup of coffee for that one because it is quite a lengthy document that specifically deals with a lot of things around our city, and I think that's all we often hear as I, with my opening comments. People say, just fix the Charter. The Charter that governs us, but we don't have the control. It's not a documented bylaw in this city. It is a provincial statute. It requires both governments to open it at the same time in agreement, close it at the same time, and put it into, into effect or into force. So I think it's, it's one of those, and, you know, it's very unique that our city has had that Charter since nineteen fifty-nine, which I think needs to be noted. It's worked. It's imperfect, as every piece of legislation that I've come to learn in the last four years plus is imperfect because somebody's always on the outside or it doesn't quite work. But at the same token, it has served us well, but at the same, in the same breath, we do need to make sure that it stays as current as possible, and we know that the provinces are continuously updating legislation. And in most cases, I won't say in all cases, some of it is beneficial, some of it is likely a little more onus on administration for reporting and things like that, but at the same token, we are a municipality under their direction. We're here at their will, so I think it's important that we, we get their support, but also that blessing through the Charter to keep things moving.
And just one, one further question. The MLAs that serve in Alberta and Saskatchewan that cover Lloydminster, have they had a bit of an education session on this, or is that something?
They both have copies of the Charter, and, and as we know, we had a newer, our MLA on the Alberta side, Garth Roswell, has spent some time with it and got to know it. Our Colleen Young is very familiar with it from her work on the school board and things like that as a fact, and that piece of it, but they're both quite aware of it. They're very proud to deliver it to the new minister every time I've had a chance to meet with them and the minister and say, oh, by the way, this is Lloydminster, and the document is approximately an inch or a little better than an inch, inch and a half thick, so it kind of catches the new minister's off guard. What's this? Because it is something, there is no other Charter that I'm aware of in Saskatchewan. There was charters that were drawn up. I'm not sure if they fully got enacted, but for the cities of Calgary and Edmonton, but those no longer exist, so we are the only Charter that I'm aware of in the two provinces. Any further discussion? With that, I will look for direction from Council on seven point two point one, Lloydminster Charter Amendments. Counsel Dychuk.
Move that Council direct the mayor to make written application to the provinces of Alberta and Saskatchewan pursuant to the process outlined in the Lloydminster Charter, requesting it to be amended by complimentary orders in Council.
Secondary, Counsel Whiting, thank you very much. Any further discussion or question before I call for the question? Not seeing any. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Thank you. Opposed? Carried. Moving on to seven point two point two. I will excuse myself from the chamber.
Thank you, your worship, for seven point two point two, Council Renumeration Policy. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For seven point two point two, Council Renumeration Policy Amendment, I will ask Dan Hobson to come forward and present.
Afternoon, Deputy Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Here today to present a minor policy change to the Council Renumeration Policy. When administration When administration provided council with the first draft, administration had made the change to take the mayor's vehicle allowance and peg that to the administrative directive, which created a substantial decrease in the mayor's remuneration. The proposal today is changing that back to how it was prior, which is a $500 a month vehicle allowance. As well, there has been a minor correction, which councillor Dycheck previously pointed out to administration in section 6.2. And that is all the changes that have been proposed for this policy.
Good. Thanks, Dan. I think we negotiated and talked about this through a previous GPC meeting. And and this is mostly a housekeeping item, I think, in my opinion. But I'd open it up to the council for any questions or comments or concerns. Seeing none, I'll look for direction from council on this item. Councillor Marron.
I move that council amends policy number 120-03, the council remuneration policy as presented.
Thank you. Second is by councillor Fagin. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Posed, carried. Thanks, Dan. Assume that you're up for the next one as well.
Yeah.
But we'll just wait for the mayor, of course.
Just trying to take his job.
He's probably thinking that we were going to be debating this longer.
Sorry, the motion didn't pass. Just kidding.
I'll return the chair to myself. Move on to 7.2.3. Daniel, please carry on.
Thank you. Good afternoon, your worship. Before council today is is a housekeeping items. So what we are looking to do today is repeal three policies that are no longer relevant as part of our governance documents review. The first policy I'll speak to is the old council remuneration policy. As council is aware, we have a new council remuneration policy, and we just amended it. Moving forward, the other two policies are largely HR-related policies. They have been addressed through collective agreements and also through internal protocols. And there is an internal directive being brought forward as well to make them more, I guess, give them a little more teeth through administration. So we'd be recommending to repeal all three of these policies.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions or comments? I certainly would entertain making that motion.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I'll move that council repeals policy number PS-03-99-21200, the group RRSP plan for out of scope employees policy.
Thank you. Seconder, councillor Whiting. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. All in favor, please raise your hand. Posed, carried. Councillor.
Thank you, your worship. I move that council repeals policy number PS-04-99-22100, vision of benefits for part-time employees policy.
Thank you. Seconder, councillor Whiting. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand before I call for the question? Not seeing any. All in favor, please raise your hand. Posed, carried.
I move that council repeals policy number CW-03-88-21200, the council remuneration policy.
Thank you. Seconder, councillor Whiting. Very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor. Posed, carried. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you, council.
Thanks for cleaning up some more legislation. Moving on to 7.3, the chief financial officer. I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, your worship, for 7.3.1, assessment master software subscription and services agreement, sole source award. I'll ask Paul Schwabus from IT to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship and council.
Good afternoon, Paul.
Before you is the master software services subscription renewal for Camelot Software. Now, the recommendation is that council approve the sole source award to Munisite Limited for a master software subscription and services agreement for assessment software over a five-year term, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. The issue Compass Municipal Services Inc. has been purchased by Munisite Limited. And as the parent company, Munisite Limited has provided software and services agreement options for the city of Lloydminster. Prior to 2019, the city outsourced property assessment services to KCL Consulting, which used Camelot Software to manage the assessments for the city. In 2019, the city brought property assessment services in-house, installed Camelot Software, and moved the data into our environment. Camelot Software is owned by Compass Municipal Services. So as a result of the purchase of Compass Municipal Services by Munisite, Munisite is providing the city administration with three options to establish a master software subscription and services agreement beginning January 1st, 2021. So option one is a five-year agreement with approximately a 2% increase year over year. Option two is a three-year agreement with approximately 4% increase year over year. And option three would be continuing with the one-year agreement where increases would be determined annually. In all cases, the price is consistent with prior years, what we have been paying. And there is no early termination option. The only instance would be if the software doesn't work, for example, and they don't fix it. Other than that, there's no termination option. The pricing is a fee per parcel billed annually, and the estimated total fees over five years is approximately $95,000. Parcel count will be conducted during the last business week of December. So there's the, there's four options there. The five-year, the three-year, the one-year, or request further information. And this expense is in the 2021 operating budget and will be included for subsequent years. Pass it back to you, your worship, for any questions.
Thank you very much, Paul. Councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, your worship. I always get concerned when I see no termination, no early termination. Can you expand on that at all? I mean, we're we're lock, could be potentially locking ourselves in then for up to five years here. And I can't, I just can't get my head around the fact that there'd be no clause in there for early termination. Why would that be?
Well, thank you, councillor Buckingham. The the agreement is a fairly standard software agreement. We have had our legislative services review it. The the no termination option is, like I said, if if the software does not perform, there would, we would have option to terminate. But if if the software performs, like, for example, if we decide not to do assessments in-house, well, that's not a, that's not a reason to terminate the agreement, for example.
Yeah, you know, there's, it's one thing to lock this council into a decision this council makes. This one actually supersedes that and goes even further. So I just, you know, when we're doing something long-term like this, I sure like to have that stuff clear or clear because it's not a one and done. This is a five-year deal, potentially. I just don't know, just don't know how comfortable I am with that.
I'll look to the city clerk.
Yeah, if I if I could provide a little clarity there, this is not an uncommon clause when you deal with software and type of agreements. And when you're dealing with a non-performance, so if the software fails to perform, then that's your out. But as as Paul said, you know, the fact that we change processes and we don't want to use it anymore is not a, not an option. Camelot is the preferred assessment software for almost all municipalities. It is the premier software, as I understand it. And it's the one we currently use. There'd be no indication that we wouldn't use it after the five years. And and really, the effective and the savings and the prices is why we're recommending five years.
And yourself, obviously, Paul and Scott and his team are very comfortable with with this software and don't force, don't know if there's anything better or different that they would want to have at their disposal to make their jobs easier?
That's correct. I mean, as I noted, so prior to 2019, when when KCL was doing our assessments, for however long they did them, a number of years, they were using Camelot Software basically on our behalf. So and as city clerk mentioned, it's in use by all but four municipalities in Alberta. So it's widely used software, been around for 20 or so years. So no, you know, no indication that there would really be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I trust, I trust you and our assessment team that you're bringing forward what they want. I just want to make sure that that you and the team have the best tools in front of you to make the job as easy as possible and as accurate as possible. And at the end of the day, providing the best service to the municipality. So if everybody's comfortable with that, I am less concerned about a longer term, as long as we're all comfortable that that's the direction that we want to take. I'm not the one using the software every day. It's got to be the people that are using it are comfortable with it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thumbs up, thumbs up from Scott back there.
Yeah, if you want more specifics on the actual use of the software and what his team, I could ask Scott to come up here.
Yeah, as long as, I got the thumbs up from Scott, that's good enough for me.
Okay.
Councillor Marron.
Thank you, your worship. So I bought software before. And and then all of a sudden, you don't get access to any of the new updates or the upgrades, and you have to pay more money for that. So within this agreement, are we kind of protected that we always have the best that they develop?
Yes, thank you, councillor Marron. With having this software and services agreement, it means we have support, so we can call them if we run into issues. As well, we also get any annual, semi-annual, quarterly, whatever, software updates. So we remain on the latest, you know, version of the software. Any new features that come out, we're entitled to those as well.
Great question, councillor. That's the one I had next. I've got councillor Torson, and then I'll get councillor Whiting.
Thank you, your worship. Just to be clear, the $95,000, is that per year? Or is that the total fees over five years? So, you know, roughly 20-some thousand a year, or 19,000 some?
Yeah, thanks councillor Torson. Yeah, that that estimated fee or approximate fee is over the five years. The contract is a fixed or a fee per parcel. And then each year, we report, Scott's team reports our parcel count, which if we expand, bring on new land, that may increase. So that's why the approximation of the value.
Yeah, that that makes sense. So did we buy outright the service when we bought it? And this is the, and this is the annual kind of maintenance fee? Or is this something different?
No, I believe this is, this is a fee in order to use the software. It's so much per parcel per year, and they're just looking for us.
Yeah, I know a little bit about this stuff just from working in a firm that had a whole bunch of pieces of software that worked a whole bunch of different ways. So I just want to make sure, does this live on the city's, on the city's servers, or is this a cloud-based system?
Not, it lives on the city's servers. In 2019, when we brought assessment in-house, we installed the software here on our servers, and the data's here.
Okay. Yeah, all I was going to say was that generally speaking, on a lot of, not all agreements are the same, but on a lot of services, you end up buying a software, and then after that, you pay an annual maintenance fee. It's approximately 30% of the initial purchase. One of the other options that is very common to exist is going straight to the subscription model, where you just subscribe to X number of seats or X number of kind of draws on their system. And that it allows you to have so much, but that's kind of more an annual fee. And then depending on whether it lives in your environment or not, and whether it's an annual service fee where you're paying for their use of the cloud as well, you know, that would all be built into this. But from what you're describing, for the type of system that it is, to me, that's, that's a pretty well a no-brainer. If it's basically the premier service, that would be like if an engineering firm was deciding to go with AutoCAD or not. You know what I mean? So there's just X number of, you buy it at one point, or there's just X number of licenses you pay annually. And you just get what you get out of that, and you can sign a multi-year agreement that might give you a better deal. If you know you're always going to be using the same software, you might as well do it. So to me, it makes sense, so long as the city is committed to doing in-house services. At approximately $19,000 per year, this really isn't, it's not a huge cost in the grand scheme of things, especially compared to the, you know, nearly $200,000, I think it was, for the KCL system that, or by going through a consultant, which had its own issues as far as accountability and different things like that and control. So, yeah, I think it makes sense to go with that. That I talked a lot.
All good conversation, councillor. Thank you very much. Councillor Whiting.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, anytime you lock yourself into a longer-term agreement, you know, I guess you kind of have to look forward and take a look and ensure that we're not missing anything as far as, you know, is there any possibility of changing plans for how we do assessment? And it sounds like that's none. And then is there any other changes that could come into play that might affect stuff? The only change that I could see would be an increase in properties and parcels by an annexation process. And I don't know if that has anything to do in here with this. Like, in option three, as an example, where it's just year-to-date, year-to-year, it says increases would be determined annually. And how do they determine that? What would, what would be the difference between? It must be more than 4% then, I assume, or?
Thank you, councillor Whiting. I mean, they haven't really elaborated, but I would assume or guess it would be more than 4%. As far as the parcels, like what what the contract is doing again is just agreeing or setting the price per parcel. And then each year, if we annex more land, our number of parcels increases, then we pay, you know, more per parcel. So the agreement, like, nothing has changed as far as what we have been doing. We've been using the software for a number of years. KCL was using it. This is really just, we have been on year-to-year. And since Munisite purchased Compass, they're now coming forward with the option for five years. And and really, I guess, the recommendation is, we're intending on using the software for a long time, and it's the cheapest cost, maybe the best value.
Yeah, I would just, if they're to all, and I'm happy to hear that all of the municipalities in Alberta, I think it was.
All but four.
All but four are using it. So that's obviously a very good sign and something that we wouldn't want to stray away from. I guess I was just trying to figure out, so are all the, with this new system, all municipalities are going to see a minimum increase over the, are they all individually?
They went to, Munisite went to all of their customers that use Camelot, and they're asking them to sign either a three or a five-year agreement. Like, yeah, we're not alone in that regard.
Yep, yep.
Previous Compass Municipal Services, they never did have multi-year agreements. They always did it annually, year by year. With Munisite, they decided to offer the multi-year agreements.
Councillor Dyche.
Thanks, your worship. So just one more question. I think we've passed this pretty good. But every parcel or titled parcel or property that has to be registered in here, in this system, by the city, so the more parcels of land, the more our rates will change. So we don't have an option on the number of parcels to put in. When we sign up with this agreement, we put all the parcels in.
That's correct.
I just thought if we didn't like the agreement, we'd put fewer parcels in and just ease our way out of this, right?
Actually, the only concern I have with this, that I know that in past, where been involved in licensure, where you have these buyouts, where all of a sudden you're limiting the competition, then you're, you can really be at the mercy of, you know, the one company that sort of owns the lion's share of the business. And so I really have no idea what competition exists in this game of parcels and whatnot. So I, you know, that's something just, that's the only piece for me that I would want to keep in mind. So those other four municipalities, why do they choose to do something different? And I don't know, you know, how far we want to go down that rabbit hole, whatever it is. But I also recognize that when you have everybody else going one way, it's typically because they like what you see. So but it's, when you're down to one or two products, they can control the price pretty
So, uh, but it's, when, when you're down to one or two products, uh, they can control the price pretty.
I'll look to the City Clerk.
Yeah, I, I can, I can say that I've had a discussion with Scott about this. And this definitely is the software the city wants to go with. Definitely the longer term is what we're looking at, provides that stability. Um, once again, yes, it's based on parcels, but you don't want to leave those parcels off, otherwise you're not assessing them either. So, you know, that's a six and a half, one half a dozen the other. But, um, you know, like, it is, uh, it is, uh, the software that everybody is using. And yes, sometimes, um, maybe those four see something we don't. Or maybe they just, um, have a smaller assessment, Mason, choose not to use something.
I, I've seen parcels where the financial part packaged, certainly it's Counselor Torson's reference, where the school division, all of a sudden, you had one company buy up, about two or three of them. And they came back and said, oh, by the way, here's what you're going to pay. And it was a significant increase. So, you know, based on this, I'm assuming the prices were close. So that there seems to be some sense of fairness and continuity, which is, is really good to see.
It gives us some stability for the next five years. And of course, um, in five years, if something better comes along, Scott and his team would recommend that as well.
Get a predictable path.
Counselor Torson, I believe you had your hand up. Good time or bad? Okay. We'll take that by that signal that he has, he said, doesn't have any further questions. Uh, any further questions around this council table? Good discussion, folks. I think it's important. Oh, there he is. He's back, Counselor Torson.
Okay, thanks, guys. Sorry. Thank you, Your Worship. No, just one other question I had, and just generally, based on, like, you know, the description of this company and everything. I just wanted to make sure that we double-checked, like, our group buying programs. Cause it seems like that, you know, if there's that much volume going towards municipality, that our, our group buying programs may have access to some of this. And whether or not, uh, some of those deals were as consistent, um, in, as far as the price goes. But maybe, uh, less issues on the term. But I'm sure you would have looked into that already, but it was just a thought I had. Yeah, at the end of the day, we're not talking about, you know, that much substantial money. If, if the, if the number of lots increases, well, I'm sure we can pay for the very small marginal increase in cost of this IT with, uh, you know, the growth that we get from any of those properties. So, uh, not too concerned with that. So, end of the day, I think it's, if, if we've crossed all the Ts, dotted all the Is, I'd say go with it. Five years is a little long, but let's say theoretically, uh, you end it one year short. Well, you're, you're only out, uh, you're only out, I guess, that twenty thousand. And it's not uncommon for someone who's aggressive, who wants your business, who's another software provider, um, that they would be willing to eat a portion of whatever you have on your bio. It's not impossible. I've seen it happen.
Thank you, Counselor. I think that, uh, I'm not sure if somebody from administration wants to address the buying qua, or the buying group that the city belongs to, if this does fall into that or not, City Manager.
I didn't look at that, but I just, I mean, I'd have to refer to Paul, but we can look into that prior to signing the contract if we haven't yet, so.
I guess I can give you a little more, um, background. The, the, again, part of the reason this all came up, the acquisition, is the, the current owner of Compass Municipal Services, he's owned the company since startup, around twenty-ish years. He's looking towards retirement. Munisite, uh, they have a lot of the same clients. I, I understand they may have shared an office before, so it's kind of a fairly mutual. And that's why maybe the acquisition happened. Um, all of the Compass employees were brought over. Um, and so, again, like, we're really not changing anything here, other than looking for a longer term. Like, they're looking for a longer-term commitment. We're not acquiring anything that we don't already have.
And answer some of the questions.
To be clear, the reason it's in front of councils is because of the sole source component of it. And not because anything else is within our current signing authorities. It's just because it's a sole source and it's over fifty thousand dollars as to why it's in front of City Council.
Thank you, City Manager. Hope that answers some of your questions, Counselor. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Dachuk, I would entertain that motion.
Move that council approved the sole source award to Munisite Limited for master software subscription and the services agreement for assessment software over a five-year term. And that the mayor and City Clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Merron. Any further discussion before I call for the question on the motion at hand? Not seeing any? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Moving on to seven point three point two, City Manager.
Thank you, Worship, for seven point three point two Municipal Asset Management Program Grant Application. I will ask Adele Walker to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Adele.
That might help. Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the Asset Management Committee today. We would like to apply for funding from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program Grant. This grant is to support the city in strengthening its asset management practices. So the Municipal Asset Management Program provides funding to help municipalities sustainably develop and strengthen their asset management programs. Due to Demand, FCM, so the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, will be opening a new intake on January nineteenth. The program funds a broad range of asset management-related activities, including assessments, plans, policies, strategies, uh, data, data collection and reporting, training, organizational development, and knowledge transfer. Municipalities with over a thousand residents are eligible for reimbursement of eighty percent of the total eligible costs, up to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, administration proposes utilizing the funds to assist with the advancement of the following key areas. Asset management planning, data collection, reporting, training, and organizational development, and knowledge transfer. This would subsidize costs related to the commitment of, or commitment to continuous improvement in asset management. This is in alignment with a strategic plan, uh, in terms of sustainable fiscal strategy. Developing an asset management program will positively assist the city to make optimal decisions about the assets and infrastructure, which are required to provide cost-effective and sustainable services to the community. Once an asset management plan is developed and adopted, policies and procedures could be amended or created. If the city applies and is approved, it would be committed to twenty percent of the total eligible project costs. Should the city be successful, FCM will provide a maximum of fifty thousand dollars in grant funding to support asset management and the proposed activities. Uh, the city's contribution would be about twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, these funds are included in the twenty twenty-one operating budget. So the options are that council directs administration to apply for the Municipal Asset Management Program Grant from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to support best practice in asset management and commits to conducting the following activities in its proposed implementation plan. Training and organizational development, asset management needs and risk assessment, and the development of an asset management, sorry, development of asset management strategies, plan, and policy amendments. In addition, the City of Lloydminster commits up to fifty thousand dollars from the city budget towards the cost of this initiative, as included in the twenty twenty-one budget.
Thank you very much, Adele. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you, Worship. And just to clarify, we do or don't have an asset management program or in place already. Do like we do, but maybe I'm.
Yes, thank you for the question, Counselor Whiting. Uh, the city does have a roadmap and we have taken on several initiatives to further our asset management. In terms of a formal policy, we intend to bring one forward in the, in the near future. And we have, and we have worked on lots of initiatives to bring this forward. We have a roadmap that we've worked on. We further enhanced a roadmap. And this is getting us to make that further commitment so that we can bring forward a really robust plan and make sure that asset management is ingrained in all of our decision-making.
Very good.
Counselor Dachuk.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Adele, for this, I guess, and thanks for, I guess, you and the administration taking the initiative on this. So, um, is, is the asset management software, is it part of the finance package? Or where does it reside?
Oh, that's a great question, Counselor Dachuk. There are many different softwares that we could use in terms of asset management, but asset management is bigger than that. It's about making decisions in terms of condition and life cycle costs. It's, it's more than just a software. So to answer your question more directly, there is a piece of the software that we, that we currently use, that we could use towards asset management, furthering it, but I wouldn't say it's the only option.
Okay, so, the reason I ask that question, because then is there additional software that we're going to need to look at? Because, I mean, uh, everything from buildings to roads to vehicles to, you know, desks, name it. You know, whatever it is in our organization. Is there a single repository or multiple layers? And I, I hear you sort of suggesting there are multiple sites now it's going to reside.
Yes, yes, thank you for the question. There are many different tools that we're currently using. Could we be using a more optimal tool? Always. But I think we're going to use the tools that we have today to go as far as we can. And then we're going to evaluate whether or not we need a different tool to, to continue this practice forward. We certainly want to be mindful of the costs involved in bringing on another piece of software and try to use the tools to the, to the best of our ability today.
Yeah, and my only, the only reason I ask is I know that when we got involved with it with the school division, uh, we did have a software program. And we were doing it in dribs and drabs and spreadsheets all over the place. And then found that one of the biggest costs was the human cost to go and input it, because it was on so many different platforms. And so there, there may be potential savings in looking at a single software solution. Uh, where then, once you've entered it once, there's no need for you to be re-entering it multiple times. Uh, and a lot of the packages talk to each other, and that's one of the things we found in that process. So, I know, I think I'd asked the question before, where that one of the modules in our current, our finance package, I think we, we could expand on it or something, or, or maybe we have a ready to, to have it used as a, uh, asset management tool. Uh, but anyway, so just, just a question around there, I guess I'm looking forward around it. Cause once it's all entered in, I mean, you know, the amount of hours it takes to enter the data and all the conditions and all, all the parameters that you put in there, then, uh, if you have to begin importing it or exporting it, uh, it can be a hassle. Mind you, Paul might be the wizard that could do it. Uh, his hair color might change a couple of times in the process, but, uh, that's part of the challenge. So, that's the reason I asked the question.
Yes, I certainly agree with you. That is one of the biggest challenges.
Counselor Torson.
Oh, good, I have sound. Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, this is one of those items where, uh, very much preaching to the converted. I, I am a big asset management guy. I think that, you know, in terms of where our city is at from an infrastructure perspective, uh, we've got buildings reports, we've got, uh, we've got some needs assessments done on what we're going to need in the future. We've got our master plans. Now the question is, all right, gang, how do we do it? And how do we do it in an efficient and cost-effective way? Um, and just in principle, we need to continue to move along this asset management planning way of thinking, thinking about what we're replacing in terms of its life cycle and additional costs that could come from not doing things at a certain time. You know, just overall, I just think that we need to continue to push this forward. I know we've, I've been to several presentations on this through my first term on council. Uh, one, we went to in Town of Vermillion, uh, Summit, UMA, at Summa. Uh, and those who preach the, uh, it's too religious. The book of municipal asset management, uh, would say that you really don't need the fancy softwares right off the bat. Just kind of, you know, the approach we're taking, you could do it with an Excel sheet. Um, and it's just all about making sure you have that good quality data and information that you're getting into it, uh, is so that it can give you an answer. One of the other things that I struggle with, with these things at the same time, is anytime you do it, it's kind of like a snapshot in time. Uh, so it, it's just one snapshot, this is where we are on X date. And then there's still, you know, things you need to do to make it work in six months or a year as more information comes up. Or you have new assessments of, uh, your infrastructure underground or something like that. Uh, so I, I absolutely think we should be moving in this direction. Take it one day at a time in terms of what tools we need to do it in an efficient and effective way, uh, as far as software and things like that, or what we need from a staffing perspective, or, or whether it's something that can be decentralized to all departments. Uh, I guess we'll see what happens as we develop the plan. But, um, looking for money from FCM, we have to spend twelve thousand, we can get fifty thousand, it could help push that agenda forward. While that could potentially save our community millions in the long term. Millions and millions. Our deficit, when we started our last term, uh, just in terms of the master plans, was half a billion dollars. And, you know, we've picked away at some of that, uh, but probably just as much has popped up since then, uh, that we have fixed up. So, uh, it's something where we're talking about, you know, in the twenty-two hundreds of millions of dollars range, where we need to be thinking about all of the assets owned by the city, all of the, um, systems in a building, all of the systems in our sewer and underground infrastructure, roads and everything. So, you know, it's incredibly important and I really hope that we, uh, get some grant funding. And even if we don't, that we continue to push this agenda forward. There's nothing more, it's one of the most important things we can do in this term.
Thank you, Counselor. You took a bunch of my talking points as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was going to say, all the smart things I was going to say, Counselor Torson just beat me to it. So I just had one simple question and I, I just want to preface that with saying, I think that this is a really good, um, uh, plan in, in terms of looking at our strategic plan and, and long-term planning for our asset management. If the FCM doesn't approve our grant request, what's the next? What's the plan after that, if we don't get the funding?
Yes, thank you for your question, Counselor Merron. Um, the, the asset management's committee are committed to seeing progress in terms of asset management. And we do have a plan that we'd like to, uh, go forward with, even though FCM may not approve the grant. Um, we are very hopeful, of course, but we still have plans and we still have funds in the budget to help make that progress.
So if we didn't get the fifty thousand, um, I think that you're asking us to approve up to fifty thousand dollars. So you'd still be able to do a really good chunk of this work. And I think it's important that we set you up for success. So, so thank you for your presentation.
Any other questions? I think that, uh, what the whole asset management brings together what the city has been doing. And it's talked about master plans, they've been dealt with, with water and sewer. But, you know, I often get asked by people, are you, why aren't you paving a road? And my response is, we'll pave the road when we fix the water and sewer, because we don't want to do it twice. And I think this helps to, just to tie that together. No different than we just went through a series over the last four years of building reviews. And that'll, excuse me, become part of that living documents that continue to carry on. And I think once you get into a habit, as we all know, if it's a good habit, it carries on and, and go from there. So I think this is a, I appreciate administration bringing this forward. I know they've been working at this over a number of years and slowly moving forward and making sure that we do it right. And I appreciate it very much for bringing it forward. I too am also hopefully very confident FCM will see the value in this, uh, as they have in other communities. It's just simply a matter of getting the application before they're holding their finger. No, we won't hold our breath, we'll cross our fingers and hope that money shows up, so. Not perspicuous. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. Do we know how many people or how many? What, what, what is their intake? What are they looking to give out versus relative to what we're asking? There's a new intake starting up, but is it public? What their lot of funds to give out is that we could access?
That's a great question, Counselor Buckingham. I don't have the figures readily available, but it is quite significant. The Federation had quite a big sum of money set aside. And the fact that they're doing another intake period tells me that it's a quite attractive program and that they are committed in helping municipalities reach their asset management goals.
So there was, in the first intake, obviously, great, great requests made from so many people. And they weren't able to do them all at the right, at that time, so.
Yes, that's, that's what it sounds like to me.
If I can add, I believe this is driven by the federal government as well with some funding through FCM. Because we, I wanted to mention that, as we've talked about this, uh, as this council, councils before, infrastructure is our mainstay. But that infrastructure includes the buildings, includes the water, sewer, streets, and all the items the city owns, which is really the residence owned by the, the residents of the city. So I think that there's a real drive from the federal government through FCM. And it's talked about at each provincial level, how important long-term planning is. And this is really what this process of asset management is, is to help develop that. As you noticed, it was a population of one thousand or greater. So, uh, we have neighbors that easily fall into that, uh, in the municipalities. From that perspective, both rural and urban, to take a look at this. Because this is something that governments have identified. We know that infrastructure is key and it's also the most expensive piece in the puzzle. I think that's where, that's where it's leading. So, uh, I think there's been more money set aside, going back to some, thinking about some of the FCM updates. And City Manager, you can add to that.
Yeah, it's an eight-year, a hundred.
Yeah, it's an eight-year, 110 million dollar project or program, according to the website. And to date, they've funded 663 projects at 27 million dollars. It's kind of what's on the website today.
I think they're encouraging everybody to get there. And for some communities, it'll just take longer than others. And they're just a steady, a steady stream of incoming applications.
And it's substantial, and it's it's one of those things that we can access or at least apply with a grant based on the fact that we are members of FCM. Some communities are not, and they would be excluded from this. So it's just one of those other value pieces to being a a member of FCM.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Not seeing any. I would look to council to entertain motion regarding 7.3.2, the Municipal Asset Management Program Grant Application. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that council directs administration to apply for a municipal asset management program grant from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to support best practice in asset management and commits to conducting the following activities in its proposed or in its proposed Asset Management Implementation Plan. Phase one, training and organizational development, asset management needs and risk assessment, development of asset management strategies, plan and policy amendments. And in addition, the council approves the city to commit up to 50,000 dollars from the 2021 operating budget towards the cost of this initiative.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor Dycheck, thank you very much. Any further discussion before I call the motion for question? Not seeing any. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Edel. Moving on to next on the agenda is 7.4, Community Development Services. The City Manager.
Thank you, worship, for 7.4.1, Lloydminster Public Library Relocation Construction Award. I'll ask Peter McHugh to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, Peter.
I'm here to make the recommendation that council approve the award of the Lloydminster Public Library Relocation Construction Work to Craftex Builders, a division of Leval Construction Limited of Lloydminster, Alberta, in the amount of 999,000 plus GST, plus a contingency of up to 5% or 50,000 plus GST to be allocated from the 2020 Capital Project Number 2076000. In addition, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. So back in April, April last year, council passed a motion to relocate the library to the Lloyd Mall. The lease was finally agreed on September the 9th of last year. And in early October, we engaged BRZ Partnership Architects, who the city, the library board, and library staff have been working with. It's been quite an intense process because we have very tight timelines. And we got the design and tender documentation together and out for tender on the 9th of December of 2020, and that closed on Thursday, January the 6th. We received seven bids that all met the mandatory requirements, or all all the bids we received met the mandatory requirements. And the costs range from 999,000 to one and a quarter million. That's really it. Do you get any questions?
Thank you, Pete. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, Pete. What's the timeline now for actually having the project done and having the library in that location, more or less?
We would like to see construction start as close as possible to the end of the month, which is again tight, but it depends on how quickly the contractors can mobilize. And and we get the contract documentations done, but we're going to really push to get that done as quickly as possible. And we reckon about four months construction. So realistically, at this moment, we're talking about end of May, early June, probably being realistic.
And our current location, that has just now moved to a month-to-month lease until we are able to relocate, correct?
I believe so, yes. And then I believe there's going to be a period of two or three weeks where they'll shut down in the old location and do the shift across.
Exactly, Manager.
Yeah, just to confirm, we do have a month-to-month at our current location until such time we move to the new location.
Anything else, Counselor? Any other questions or comments? Looking around, Counselor Torson.
Just out of curiosity, not trying to make this take longer, but so would this be one of those contract A, contract B situations, rather than when we normally put the full scoring?
Correct, yes. They'll now go on to sign a CCD C2 contract with the stipulated price within that. So the full document will have the tender bid, plus the CCD C2, which has got any city amendments in there as well.
Okay, so just for the other newer members of council or the other ones looking for a refresher, basically that that really challenges you in that, on this one, although it is a local that did get the top bid, it would challenge you in terms of going with anything other than the low bid because everyone met the requirements. So low bid kind of would win, otherwise you would potentially see some sort of legal challenge of lost profits included in it. That's it.
Thanks, Counselor. Pete, if I could ask you, the on the capital budget on page two, there's 80,000 dollars in ancillary costs. Is that moving costs? Maybe I might need to direct that to someone else, the executive team. Because we've got the consultant costs, furniture, and then there's an 80,000 dollar cost in ancillaries.
That that will be items like digital clocks, monitors for, one of the ideas is there's a couple of locations, there'll be monitors that will, one of them is outside the programming rooms, so advertise what's happening in those rooms and the time it's happening. We're also going to have one outside the door that will have opening times and advertise any programming or events that are coming up. So there's going to be a number of just incidental little items that we need to be making sure that we have some funds available to to buy those.
So it wasn't built into the actual project, the contract project? And it isn't, it isn't, wasn't deemed as furniture, but it's additional.
It's additional things specifically, specifically library requirements.
No, perfect. I just was looking for a little clarification. Thank you. Counselor Dycheck.
Yeah, thanks, worship. So the external signage that's out at the where the mall has all its signing, is that our cost or is it the mall going to put that up, or who puts that up?
As part of the lease agreement, that's our responsibility and our cost to put the sign up. And then there's a fee per month to have a sign on their on their pylon sign. And that was all included in the lease agreement negotiations.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Stang. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Just to be clear, so would the capital portion of that sign be included in those ancillary costs then?
No, well, unless Pete allocated for it, but based on what I'm seeing there, it wouldn't have been. So that's something we'll have to bring back to council.
The signage that will be at the entrance within the mall will all be included in the contract. There's a, there's a very nice entrance created with signage in there. The new library logo will be part of that.
Yeah, thanks, Pete. You're right. The interior, the inside, the mall signage is included in these costs. If we choose to put a sign on the exterior pylon sign, it'd be our cost to purchase that sign. And then we would pay a fee per month to have that sign on the pylon side.
That would be if there was signage space available.
That's that's correct. I I do believe there is some on the on the very west. Yes, we could decide to do that or not decide to do that, depending on our wish to be visual from from the highway in regards to our libraries.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction from council on 7.4.1, the Lloydminster Public Library Relocation Contract Award. Counselor Fagman.
I move that council approve the award of the Lloydminster Public Library Relocation Construction to Craftex Builders, a division of Levally Construction Limited of Lloydminster, Alberta, in the amount of 999,000 plus GST, plus a contingency allowance of up to 5% or 50,000 dollars plus GST to be allocated from the 2020 Capital Budget Project Number 2076000. In addition, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you, Counselor. Look for a seconder. Counselor Dycheck, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand before I call for the question? Not seeing any. Raise your hand for all in favor, please. Thank you. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, Pete. Moving on to item number eight, bylaws. 8.1, City Manager.
Thank you, worship, for 8.1, Bylaw Number 28-2020, Fire Bylaw. I will ask the City Clerk, Doug Rodwell, to present.
City Clerk.
Thank you, worship. I apologize, the fire chief got called away. Fire chiefs often do, so I'll do my best as we work through this, and Dan is there to support me. The recommendation is that council grants grant second and third reading to Bylaw Number 28-2020 Fire Bylaw. The council grant third reading and third and final reading to Bylaw Number 28-2020 of the Fire Bylaw. In 2015, the council passed Bylaw Number 25-2015, which outlined the process for how the Floydminster Fire Service and the public will operate in regards to fire protection within the city. On December 14th, 2020, council passed the first reading of Bylaw 28-2020 Fire Bylaw with some key changes to the bylaw, which include the authorities to the fire chief and delegates, fire prevention program and procedures, fire ban permits and fire bans. Options are that council approve. All motions are stated, council does not not approve the the 20, the bylaw. The council requests further information. This item is aligned with the following strategic area, legislative compliance. Updating the Fire Bylaw will allow for better alignment with industry standards and bring the city into compliance with fire code issues. Government implications, Bylaw 2025-2015 will be repealed once Bylaw 28-2020 Fire Bylaw has been approved. Budget implications, a 10% surcharge will be added to commercial building permits for the purchase purpose of future annual legislative fire inspections. I will expand on the authorities of the fire chief and delegates in the previous draft. I had the fire chief responsible to the city clerk, keeping with governance and all employees are the employees of the city manager, that was changed to reflect the city manager. Fire prevention programs and procedures, fire permits and bans were adjusted to meet the requirements of the annexation to annexation processes. And we we pick the National Fire Code exclusively rather than deal with fuel tanks and that that manages. Dan, if you'd like to expand on anything that I've missed or?
I'm comfortable with your summary at this point.
Your worship, yours.
Thank you, City Clerk. From city clerk to fire, you have fire specialist. I like it. I look to council for any questions or comments regarding the proposed bylaw. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Do we have a communications plan in place for this? In particular, there's one, one part of this bylaw that gives one year's notice from the time the bylaw takes effect, which is potentially today, regarding lock boxes and public buildings and and those types of things. So what is our communication plan for making sure that people are fully aware of this so that a year from today we don't have a mass panic about trying to make themselves compliant?
So they they were waiting for the passing of the bylaw, and then they were going to move through with communications and finalize that. Very clearly, they're going to communicate to the commercial businesses because that's the affected parties within here. So that that will occur and that communications plan will be brought forward or or and can be brought forward to a GPC meeting to advise council of what steps we're taking.
The other couple of questions I had were, as we go into this annexation, potential annexation process and and so on and so forth, we're comfortable with. Let's face it, there there are a lot more fire permits issued in a rural setting than there are in a city setting. So if we're going to be taking over rural lands in an annexation, we're comfortable with the scope that that covers in this bylaw now?
Yeah, my understanding at this point, counselor, is is that fire chief has has reached out to the county and and we've we've modeled their process so that residents being annexed understand the process and and he's done his due diligence and is is comfortable with with everything.
My last question is around the airport. And we just referenced fuel tanks and and things like that. With the change of this bylaw, is there any changes that are going to have to happen to current lease leaseholders or anything like that around the airport? Because it's one of the few places I can think of that, besides a commercial bulk facility or, you know, a fuel sales facility that has tanks on site.
There there wouldn't be any changes. They should be in compliance already with with National Fire Code. The the bylaw that we're looking to replace with this Fire Bylaw, it had, it did have an inspection and permitting permitting process in place for the fire department. To my knowledge, though, that that was an aspect that that we didn't do at the time with a strictly volunteer force. It just wasn't manageable. So we pegged to the National Fire Code, as the city clerk said. And we're looking through those proper authorities to do those permitting processes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All good questions. Certainly, we've had the opportunity to see this, I guess, now a third time, I believe it came as a GPC item, first reading and comments have been received throughout, and the city clerk noted there's been some changes to to get it up to where I think that the general aspect is. So I would, if there's no further questions or comments, I would entertain council's direction on Bylaw Number 28-2020, the Fire Bylaw for a second reading. Counselor Maren.
Thank you, worship. I motion that council grant second reading to Bylaw Number 28-2020, Fire Bylaw.
Look for a seconder. Counselor Fagman, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the bylaw at hand to be voted on? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, carried. Counselor Maren.
I further motion that council grant third and final reading to Bylaw Number 28-2020, Fire Bylaw.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Fagman, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the third and final reading of the bylaw proposed? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, Counselor. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, City Clerk and Dan. Moving on to next item on the agenda is 8.2, Bylaw Number 38-2020, Domestic Animal Bylaw.
Thank you, worship, for 8.2, Bylaw Number 38-2020, Domestic Animal Bylaw. I will ask Glenn Alfred to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship, members of council.
Good afternoon, Glenn.
I appear before you today with a recommendation that council grant second reading to Bylaw 38-2020, the Domestic Animal Bylaw, as well as the third and final reading for the the Domestic Animal Bylaw as well. The last time the bylaw was updated was in 2015. And through consultation with veterinary clinics, as well as the SPCA, and ongoing calls over the past five years, a couple of changes were made. One being that discontinuance of licensing in the proposed bylaw for dogs and cats with an implementation of a requirement for identification tags instead. We also differentiate between attacks committed by domestic animals on another animal or a person. The seriousness of an attack on a person is very different than an attack on an animal. And that was reflected in in this bylaw proposal. We also addressed the domestic animal requirements for any lands that are annexed by the city in in conjunction with the County of Vermillion River. And basically, the provision is that it's existing non-conforming until this bylaw is changed again. Those are basically the summarization of the change. basically the summarization of the changes that are in this bylaw compared to one that was passed in two thousand and fifteen. There is a minor impact financially on the SPCA from loss of revenue for the licensing and, uh, in consultation with the executive director of the, uh, SPCA. Uh, they are supportive of this bylaw with the ultimate goal for the identification of the animal, uh, and being taken back to the, the owner without any delay.
All good?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Questions or comments? Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I meant to ask it in the last bylaw and I had it written down and I didn't, but the same question applies here. Um, so we've got a provision in there for annexed lands, um, and things there. Does it only reference the County of Vermillion River in that provision because not that it's on the horizon or anything, but if if someone was to be looking at annexing, uh, to the east at all, even if it's just one parcel of land or something, would we have to then go and amend this bylaw or is it just say annexed lands?
That's actually a very good point, uh, Counsel Buckingham. It it just refers to annexed lands. Any lands annexed by the city during the life of this bylaw, uh, would be existing non-conforming.
Oh, that's great. I don't want to have to go back and create a bunch more red tape and and things like that. Not like I say, not that it's on the horizon, but just something I was thinking about and I didn't see in there for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any other questions or comments? So as it was alluded to in the fire bylaw, um, Glenn, what there is a plan for communication because this is going to be a significant change for people. Some people may have already bought their animal tags this year or has the SPCA? How has the SPCA been handling that since we're already into the?
We were in communication with them as well as the veterinary clinics, uh, ahead of time. Uh, we have a communications plan already developed, uh, uh, in the event that the, uh, bylaw is passed today, uh, to put out immediately. And, um, it it has been communicated that this was a proposal that was going forward to council. Uh, and therefore they held off on, uh, purchasing any licenses or or making any expenditures with, um, with the feedback that we had gotten in at GPC and in the first, uh, reading. So, uh, they held off on that and they're just waiting to hear from us with respect to the outcome of today's council meeting. Uh, but people have been inquiring and we've been told to send a review and so we haven't sold any licenses whatsoever yet this year.
Okay, so and we'll also be commencing communications from the city as well to help get that message out as well through, uh, to the public as quickly as possible.
Either eventual out, uh, eventuality was, uh, planned for and we we have it ready to go out today.
Terrific. If an animal that has not been licensed in the past is brought to the SPCA, found lost in the street. So the SPCA no longer has a tag that what there was no tag originally. Will they, uh, microchip that animal before it's released to ensure that it be able to hopefully make its way to its owner if it is returned back to the SPCA a second time?
Okay, the the process that we have right now, we estimated approximately four percent of animals were licensed in the city. So that left a huge number of animals that weren't. Um, by making the process easier, we feel there's going to be a lot better uptake in the identification tags that are going to be, uh, required for the animal, just as they were required to have a license before. Uh, if they are impounded now, we won't have that information. There's no provision in the bylaw that requires them to have them microchipped or tattooed or anything else. There's simply that tag. And, um, the the best part of that is it's transferable. So it's got the the operational telephone number of the the owner. Um, you know, if their animal passes away, they can still use that same tag for if they have a new animal, as long as it's the same telephone number. Um, with the ultimate goal of getting the animal back, uh, without being impounded at all.
Absolutely. And I think that's the important step. Thank you. I think that's the message that people need to understand. Is not, it's going to cost you, I think, uh, seven, eight, ten dollars to get a tag to to put on that, uh, onto the collar to that animal. That will be all it really that should make your cost and that will connect you to your animal much faster, your animal back to you through our peace officers, through SPCA, however they end up, wherever they end up at, if somebody picks one up off the street and they'll take it there. Um, and there won't be a huge fine issue and things like that and the extra cost. So I think that's, that's what the intention of this is and I appreciate that because often here, as you said, it's people I didn't get to the SPC, I didn't get a license, but we hear all the different explanations. So if we can simplify, uh, simplify, simplify this process, hopefully we'll, uh, get rid of a lot of red tape at the city, at the SPCA and everything. So.
Quite often we find that, um, animals that we do pick up that are strays are actually not that far from their residents, uh, or their owners. And, uh, they're already out looking for them. Uh, this will be one step where, uh, we'll be able to get that animal back to its, uh, proper owner, uh, in very short order.
Terrific. All right. I think I saw Counsel Torson just momentarily there that had his hand up and I see he's left the screen again. So I'll ask, uh, around this table, is there anyone that has any other questions or comments? Before I move to that, I just would like to try and address Counsel, if Counsel Torson has a question? Yeah, I'm not sure. And have we lost Counsel Torson? Kind of goes away. Okay. I'll just look to administration. Any sign?
Dan, did we lose, uh, that feed?
Okay, no problem. Hopefully he'll reestablish it. It will just give him a minute to do that. If, uh, I guess we can take it during before I call for the vote. I'll try and give him that opportunity if that's where we end up. So I will look for council's direction on eight point two, the bylaw number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty, the domestic animal bylaw. Counsel Dajchak.
I had to move that council grant second reading of bylaw number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty, the domestic animal bylaw.
Look for a second, Counsel Whiting, thank you very much. Dan, if I can ask, can you tell if he's trying to establish a link?
Okay, because you called the question.
He can't.
He wasn't present, so he can't.
Okay, not a problem. All right. Any further discussion? Not seeing any noted, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. I'm just going to I guess we need to carry on. So I will look to direction for third and final reading. Counsel Dajchak.
Move that council grant third and final reading to bylaw number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty, the domestic animal bylaw.
Second, or Counsel Whiting, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question at hand? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Glenn.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to bylaw number eight point three, uh, bylaw eight point three, bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, the land use bylaw amendment, development permit validity. With the city manager.
Thank you, worship, for eight point three bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty land use bylaw amendment, development permit validity. I'll ask Anthony Andre to come forward and present and while Anthony's coming up, I'll introduce our new staff member Caitlin Luster, who has joined us from Saskatchewan. She's back here taking in the council meeting today for those wondering, so. I'd like to welcome her to our team.
Very much. Welcome to, welcome to our team and welcome to Lloydminster.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council.
Good afternoon, Anthony.
The recommendation is that council council grant second and third readings to bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash two thousand and sixteen, respecting development permit validity. The finance department has been in the process of reviewing business license, uh, business licensing procedures in order to create a streamlined application process for business licenses. The proposed text amendment strives to reduce approval times for many development permit applications which are required prior to the issuance of a business license. The current provisions state that the development permit is not in effect until twenty-one days after the notice of decision has been issued, allowing for the expiry of an appeal period required by the municipal government act. Therefore, development or the new use of a property cannot commence within this time period. Legal council has drafted the proposed amendment, which would allow developments for permitted uses to commence during the appeal period. Um, this, this, uh, sorry, um, this only applies, uh, for permitted uses. Um, as the likelihood of an appeal from third parties is low in this case. It is important to note that the appeal period will still continue to exist. However, development may take place during this time at the risk of the applicant. This practice is similar to many comparable, to several comparable municipalities who have reported positive feedback about the process. The draft changes would only apply to development permits for permitted uses, which comply to all provisions of the land use bylaw and would ex would exclude discretionary uses and those requiring any form of variance or relaxation from the standards. The draft amendment also extends the timeframe for which a development permit remains valid after a use has become inactive. Currently, the permit is considered void if the use has been discontinued for a period of six months and it is proposed that this be amended to twelve months to better accommodate seasonal businesses. Information respecting the text amendment was provided at the December seventh, two thousand and twenty GPC meeting. No changes have been made to the draft bylaw since it received first reading, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Any questions or comments? So Anthony, again, this is going to take some communication and it'll likely happen right at the develop at planning and development because with this change, it'll affect someone coming in, asking for a development application and or applying for development application. That would be communicated at that time to the, uh, that applicant or applicants. Number of people under one application saying this is the conditions, but you do need to be aware that the plan of attack.
Yes, absolutely. There will be, uh, conditions on the development permit explaining, explaining what this effectively does for the applicant.
And will that, has that gone through? I know the bylaw has gone through legal, but just to cover ourselves on all aspects, because if it's on a city letterhead, it's the city's very, got to be prepared to defend it.
Yes, verbiage has been provided from legal counsel.
Terrific. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we've covered off all the angles because we know there can be occasionally confusion and this could, this, uh, this interpretation, I guess, would be the word of, uh, wording. So just to be as clear, crystal clear and ensure that the city is as as comfortable as we can be with legal side. Any other questions or comments? With that, I would look entertain, uh, a motion, a second reading of this bylaw if so, council still wishes. Counsel Whiting.
Thank you. I move that council grant second reading to bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash two thousand and sixteen, represent respecting development permit validity.
Thank you very much. Second, or Counsel Fagman, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counsel Whiting, if you would.
I move that council grant third and final reading to bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash two thousand and sixteen, respecting development permit validity.
Thank you very much. Second, or Counsel Fagman, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand before I call the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you, your worship.
Moving on to eight point four, city manager.
Thanks, your worship, for eight point four bylaw number forty dash twenty twenty Senior Citizen Housing and Allied Arts Council repealing bylaw, name of bylaw. For this, I'll ask Dan Hobson to come forward, please.
Afternoon again, your worship and council.
Good afternoon again, Dan.
Another house cleaning matter for council today. Uh, we're looking at bringing forward a repealing bylaw to repeal the multiple senior citizen housing bylaws as well as the allied arts council bylaw. Uh, in regards to the allied arts council bylaw, it is a bylaw that outlines the structure of the allied arts organization. In consult consultations with them, they have no objections, uh, to us repealing this bylaw. And the bylaw in its current format is not utilized by the organization in any form. Um, similar situation with senior citizen housing, uh, orders in council have now replaced the bylaws for the senior citizen housing association. So the bylaws have also served their purpose and are no longer used by any senior housing organization within the city of Lloydminster. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel Buckingham. Nope. I was just going to say, just so it's crystal clear for everyone, orders in council at the provincial level then trump our bylaws in place. Correct, Dan?
Correct. City clerk.
City clerk. Yeah, it's a hierarchy of legislation. So the order in council would be more, um, would be the directing.
Yeah, so in essence, we've been, uh, our former bylaw has been replaced by provincial provincial directions. So does indeed make that. And I would entertain that motion unless there's any other comments. Not seeing any. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move the council grant first reading the bylaw number forty dash twenty twenty, the senior citizen housing and allied arts council repealing bylaw.
Thank you very much. Second, or Counsel Whiting. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Moving to the next item on the agenda, item number nine. Uh, mayor and councillor reports, uh, wanted to wish everyone a very happy new year and welcome them back into two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm sure that we're all looking forward to a much more progressive and happier two thousand and twenty-one than we just experienced in two thousand and twenty. We still have some challenges that we face as a community of pro both provinces in the country and the world, but I'm hoping we're moving forward with those. Uh, I can report that, uh, vaccinations are starting to happen in both provinces. Certainly, we are on the, the city is on the list and they will be coming forward. Uh, I don't want to give an answer because I don't have the answer, but I do know that Saskatchewan Health Authority is looking after it. I believe AHS is also being involved in that process, uh, at certain points in Alberta. So we'll, uh, stay tuned to be informed. I am on, I've been attending a weekly meeting with the Minister of Government Relations from Saskatchewan and, uh, members of the Department of Health have been present to help answer questions. Uh, it is happening on an hourly basis. So people that are asking, when are we going to see a vaccine and when are we going to be able to get vaccinated? It just stay tuned to the local media. That information will be provided and I'm sure there'll be no shortage of information advising people. Uh, one thing that I can note is that if a clinic does come available, they will over, uh, they'll ask for overages to ensure that if someone fails to, uh, uh, show up, it's, uh, very vital that people, there's enough people to receive the vaccines that are thawed. If it's the Pfizer product as an example. So they overbook the vaccination. So if you do get called to go, uh, for a vaccine, please be patient because it will take time to get through this process. And hopefully you'll begin it when you get your first call or your first appointment, but you may have to go back again just due to the simple fact that they are going to overbook to ensure that there's no vaccine wasted. Um, each government is fully aware of the issues, I believe, from that perspective and are working through it as best as they can in consultation with the federal government because this is a, a multiple piece. Uh, we have not been asked yet to, uh, support any of the efforts, but we'll keep, uh, council and the community informed as this unfolds because I guess that's likely the biggest activity going on right now from that perspective. Um, we are waiting this week for an update from the government of Saskatchewan regarding, uh, restrictions. I'll call them that. Uh, that are in effect till the fifteenth of January. We have not had any indication whether they're going to change, stay the same, one way or another. So again, stay tuned to the media. If you're inquired by someone what's happening, nothing's changed yet and, uh, I suspect we will know likely prior to the fifteenth from the direction that I heard from the government of Saskatchewan. Uh, other than that, I know that, uh, people continue to try and do fundraising events in this community. And I encourage everyone to keep an eye out if they can help with some fundraising events, one way or another, with the various nonprofit groups and associations in our community. Everyone is feeling the challenge of not having regular activities, regular fundraising activities that they're used to. Encourage people to support them as best as possible. I'll open the council table. If anyone has anything they'd like to bring forward as councillors for councillors' report. Not seeing anything noted, I will ask at this time if there's any other matters that this council needs to deal with. Not seeing any, I will look for inquiries from the media. Thank you very much. With that, I would look to council for a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Counsel Dajchak, seconded by Counsel Fagman. All in favor? Councillor Dychuk, seconded by councillor Fagman. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much.